So it gives you opportunities to ask questions of staff. We will take up certain pithy subjects like pickleball courts and what have you today during your business item briefings. Uh, we also have a guest and at the appropriate time, Matthew Freeman, our city attorney will introduce Sharon Pandak. But I do want to acknowledge Sharon. Uh, so I too was at one point a local government attorney and still keep the law license active. And uh, do get to see Sharon at local government stuff. So I just wanted to say hi to Sharon and then welcome to Lynchburg. So, so happy to see her. You do have roll call, no close session this afternoon. And I thought before we jump into the business side of briefings, I'd take one minute here, one more minute, if that's okay, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, so this past Friday, we celebrated the wonderful news of expanding air service north to Chicago and to DC. Everyone was there for it. We were, we were all there for it with the exception of one person, one very important person, Cedric Simon. Cedric Simon is our airport director. He is here with us and I said then, and I'll say now, he was where he needed to be, which was, he was at his brother's wedding in Pennsylvania where he was a groomsman. Uh, if anything, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I just want to acknowledge Cedric and his opportunity to be here with us. Cedric, uh, thank you so much for your efforts, uh, principal architect and making sure to bring that air service to us. We, I will say, I certainly, we certainly missed you, but we did give an appropriate, I think, hello to the family. And if, and, and, and if you want to come forward and at least make sure, we want to make sure if anything wedding nuptials went through as planned and everyone is fully married.
Yes.
Oh, fifty-four. Well, that's good. That's good. That's good.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, City Manager, thank you all for, you know, giving me the space for that. And it's obviously the additional air service at Lynchburg Regional Airport was a massive undertaking. It took a whole team, uh, myself, you know, communications, economic development tourism, economic development authority, our commission, everybody. It was a big lift from everybody. I'm sad I wasn't there, but like you said, I had somewhere else that we had to be. So, uh, I enjoyed that and thank you for the space that, that was allowed of me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cedric. Now, now make sure all those airplanes are taking off when they need to.
Definitely.
And those new ones that when they arrive in March are ready to go.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Cedric. I appreciate you. Um, one other, uh, just to acknowledgement, this is something I have to keep reminding myself. So, um, I know that you probably all remember, but our next meeting, November 12th is on a Wednesday. Because November 11th is Veterans Day. And so as a result, because it's a holiday, our meeting is on a Wednesday. So just, um, I will be the one that probably shows up here on that Tuesday and doesn't remember. But I thought if anything, uh, make sure that everyone remembers that it is on a Wednesday, November 12th, not that Tuesday. So with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Yes, sir. The first item on the business item briefing, uh, thirty-two hundred Carroll Avenue Conditioner Use Permit, Pickleball Athletic Club.
Uh, the purpose of this CUP petition or conditional use permit is to allow the use of the existing structure uh, as an athletic club for pickleball in an I two light industrial district at thirty-two hundred Carroll Avenue. The city's future land use map recommends employment to uses for the subject property. The existing I two light industrial district was established in nineteen seventy-eight. In this district, athletic clubs and recreational sports facilities are permitted upon approval of a CUP from council. The property is bound by a mix of residential, commercial and industrial uses, but the immediate surrounding area is zoned industrial. The subject property consists of approximately one hundred, sorry, one point twenty-one acres. It contains a one-story steel frame structure constructed this year. This structure is approximately sixty-six hundred square feet in size, and the petitioner is proposing to house the pickleball club in that building. An additional seventy-five hundred square foot structure has also been permitted for construction adjacent on the site. The use of the structure as a pickleball club should have limited impact on the surrounding area. The club will only use a portion of the subject property and the adjacent structure may still be used as industrial space. And the structure could be converted back to industrial if needed, if the club were to relocate later on. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on September twenty-fourth. And this item will return for a city council public hearing on November twelfth, which is a Wednesday.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from council?
I don't know. I don't know what that means.
Space in between the line and.
This would be a great opportunity for me to learn.
Is there anyone else?
Oh.
Most admission.
Right. Bill Burr, I think that this is a really great idea to do here. You notice in the planning commission notes that there were some people that were concerned about home values. I just, you know, I don't think that's an issue. I think with it being industrial zoned, you know, if I lived backed up to, uh, industrial zoning, I'd rather have a pickleball club than a true, you know, what, what we can do on industrial zoning. So I think this is actually a very nice way to buffer the industrial zoning from some of these residential properties. And, and I look forward to hopefully we can get this passed.
Is there anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Fresh. Noah, Ms. Fresh.
You're stuck with me.
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-one thirty-four Wesley Drive Conditioner Use Permit.
Yes. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The purpose of this CUP petition is to allow the use of an existing structure as a large group home for up to thirty-six individuals in an R four high-density residential district at twenty-one thirty-four Westerly Drive. Our future land use map recommends mixed use for the property. Generally, these are meant to be a balanced mix of residential, commercial, civic uses and open spaces. The existing R four zoning was established in nineteen seventy-eight. In this district, large group homes are permitted upon approval of a CUP from council. The property was previously used as the Miller Home for Girls, which is a private nonprofit group home for girls under the age of twenty-one who cannot live with their families. The subject property consists of about five acres and contains a nineteen thousand square foot structure constructed in nineteen fifty-nine. These are the actual original building drawings we're looking at here. If the petition is approved, the existing structure would be used as a large group home for up to thirty-six individuals enrolled in a substance abuse uh, treatment services program. The petitioner plans to use the property in its current configuration and layout. Uh, no additions or major modifications are planned at this time. The surrounding neighborhood has a mix of residential uses at various densities, along with the number of medical, office and commercial uses located nearby. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on October eighth. And this will return for city council public hearing on November twelfth.
Thank you. One question. What ever happened to the young ladies at the Miller Home?
So the Miller Home is currently still in the building. Um, the petitioner is the contract purchaser for the building. So if this were to go through and their real estate, estate transaction goes through, uh, the Miller Home would relocate into a smaller group home setting. Because apparently their numbers have dwindled over time. They're only serving about eight to ten girls.
Okay.
At this facility. So it's, it's really a lot more space than they need. So the Miller Home will still continue. It'll just be in a different location.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, item number three. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Ms. Tim.
And this may be a follow-up with you can't be an email because we've had ongoing discussions about this in regards to books and, and whatnot. I, I think the transition of using this property is, is probably a good transition. My concern is, and I'm trying to be careful with what I speak to, just the, the licensing issues that have been a repeat issue with, with this particular um, group that's interested. So I, I want to make sure that all of that is in good shape before we're approving an expansion in another area, if there's a history of, of licensure concerns and, and proper paperwork. So, um, that's my primary concern in regard to this particular project.
This is the committee staff. That's a reminder. And we'll touch on both of them and how, how this went is following the, the process that we prefer.
Okay. And that'll be with the next meeting. So we'll do PDC before. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Yep. Just, I just fixed it. So thank you. Cause I would have been here on Tuesday. So, all right. Cool. That's great. Thank you.
Well, yes, thank you. Probably me with the developer, the company, but I, I think I, Tom just didn't miss him right. Get more answers to so a few questions. That was one of the questions that has, well, cause the problem challenges with the other property. Um, I've received a few, like one or two phone calls from some of the residents. Uh, he did mention to me they did have a, a event for the residents or is having an event for the residents. I just stressed that point to make sure that he came here with the residents. I think, um, something concerning about the person might be coming there. Um, he mentioned, he kind of assured me there's no like criminal records of either nature, that, um, they are busy all day pretty much. They also go to another site for counseling or whatever. Uh, so he kind of, I like whenever they come to their presentation. He, he probably gives more information about it, but I do feel a little more comfortable, especially with talking to the residents. Cause the resident, at the end of the rest, I'm trying to look through the notes. Did any of the residents come to the planning commission meeting?
Uh, there were two residents from the same household that came to the meeting, uh, to speak against it. Um, however, it did, and I don't want to speak for them. So take this with a grain of salt. But it, it sounded like they had a good conversation after the meeting and they may have actually gotten their concerns resolved. I don't know that for a fact. Um, but I know they, the, the petitioner has been very, um, helpful in understanding, you know, their operations. It seems like they're very structured. Um, so I, I'm sure if any of the residents still have concerns, um, they could, they could reach out to the petitioner, um, or staff, and we can relay those as well.
Thank you. It might be the ones that gave you a call. So I'm glad that, um, that they did communicate with them and they're having an event for the neighbors. Just kind of assure them to get, to answer any questions about the project and the property. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Most efficient.
Yeah. Do our due diligence on this one because it's also two hundred and fifty-some feet from East Glass High School. Right? So we got to consider what we're neighboring our, the schools with when it comes to, um, you know, concerning the parents of, you know, because you've got kids from all over the city that go to East Glass and so forth. So we just need to make sure that we're, uh, doing our due diligence on, on this with the distance from school.
Another back and forth between the petitioner and the city and look forward to getting an update on where that stands. Generally, before you move forward on another project, it's always good to wrap up the previous one. And it sounds like we still have a few loose strings, uh, on the previous. So, um, I have a question. I just don't understand, uh, maybe how the city works on these sort of things. But when there are compliance issues, is there any history in the city of doing some sort of a compliance liaison? Uh, who's looking at things maybe on a quarterly basis, just to make sure people who, who've had a problem, um, being compliant, uh, stay on track. And, uh, and we don't get ourselves in a situation where we're, you know, geared down the road. It's already there. People are in and then, and then we find out we got an issue, especially somebody with, with a previous history, I guess.
It probably varies by department, but I, I will say, I mean, you know, this is a lot of our zoning, uh, issues. We have a small but mighty staff of two and, uh, and so a lot of our zoning issues are, once we receive a concern, we follow it and then we follow it all the way to the end and report out that way. Often that does change future practice, practice. If we learn something new through that. But, but zoning has, uh, had always been a complaint-driven, uh, function with the city.
So there's no problem. Usually it doesn't rise above the radar, but if there is a problem, then maybe we pay a little closer attention to it.
Yes, sir. I, I will say that we've, we've said for years, being a good neighbor is always important. So.
All the way around.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Most of the right.
My question for the attorney, when considering a conditionally used perimeter is, are we able to make a decision based off of their past, future or current compliance problems with their licensures with the state? Or is that a state-driven decision? Cause I, I don't want us to make a decision based off of compliance if we're not allowed to make a decision based off of.
So you can, and I think especially with a conditional use permit, you could require as part of the conditions that they, you know, before they engage in the use, they have all appropriate licensure certifications.
Yeah.
And are adhering to appropriate laws. So I think you can consider that as part of the use of the property for sure.
Good to know. Thank you.
Most efficient.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, Mr. City Attorney, I guess another question is, if we'd be able to require them to install a fence on the perimeter or something like that with as part of a condition? If that's something that we felt was necessary with the, how close it is to a school, I guess.
You can, as long as it is not discriminatorily related in some way to the use. So as long as there's a rational basis for requiring what you, uh, want for the particular use. So if it's to screen trash, right? Or if it's to, uh, uh, screen noise or dampen noise that may be over there, then yes. Um, but requiring a fence, you know, certainly they could agree to do that as part of it if they're agreeable. But imposing it on them has to have some rational reason or basis to the, the use itself.
Got it. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay. Next item number three, seventeen oh one and seventeen oh three Waltsford Road Rezoning. Ms. Fresh.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The purpose of this petition is to rezone seventeen oh one and seventeen oh three Wardsbury Road from R three medium density residential to R four high-density residential to allow the construction of a ten-unit apartment development. The city's future land use map recommends medium-density residential use for the properties. These areas are characterized by smaller lot, single-family detached housing, duplexes and townhomes at densities of up to twelve units per acre. The subject property was annexed into the city in nineteen seventy-six and the existing R three zoning was established in nineteen seventy-eight. The properties each currently contain a duplex built in nineteen seventy. So there's currently a total of four units located here. If the petition is approved, the existing residential structures would be demolished and the property would be developed as a ten-unit townhouse-style apartment development with associated parking. The properties are located at the corner of Harvard Street and Wardsbury Road and CVCC Campus Drive. The, uh, V dot is currently in design phase for a roundabout at this intersection. So the concept plan has been shared with their team and this is just a visual overlay of those two projects for your reference. Single-family and duplex residential uses are adjoining the property with the CVCC campus located across Wardsbury Road. In the vicinity, on the sixteen and seventeen hundred blocks of Wardsbury Road, there are existing townhouses and townhouse-style apartment unit developments. The proposed density for the ten dwelling units is below the threshold recommended by our future land use map, which is up to twelve units per acre in the medium-density category. The planning commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on October eighth. And again, this will return for a city council public hearing on November twelfth.
It's good.
I'm, so I don't know if I've encountered this before. Are we, um, one of the reasons we're able to make a decision on zoning is related to traffic flow and so on? So currently it's a two-way stop, four-way intersection, but it's going to be a roundabout. Do we make the decision based off of the roundabout of what's coming or what's current?
I think you could consider both.
You think we consider both?
So I think, um, as it relates to the future use or proposed use, you can consider that. You can consider the needs of the, of the community as it presently exists.
Fair.
Ms. Tim.
Ms. Fresh, would you mind speaking more to the parking and what parking is available with the number of units? And how many bedrooms are in the units? Cause this is most likely student housing. I know how I lived as a student. Don't know how you all lived as a student, but my husband definitely lived in a garage. So how is this gonna, um, work out with, with parking?
Right. Um, so they are proposing ten units and seventeen parking spaces. Our zoning ordinance requirement is one parking space per dwelling unit. So that's a minimum of ten. Um, and they have indicated that these are two bedrooms per unit. So that is not one car per bedroom. Our, our ordinance is based on, on units. Um, so if there are two, two tenants, no, not everyone will have a parking space. I would offer that this is a half mile from CBCC, a half mile from retail, including groceries at Walmart and restaurants. It could be a good opportunity for students or the residents without a car. Um, it's not all connected by sidewalk, but majority of it, of that route does have sidewalk. Um, and so, yes, they are meeting the minimum, but it, you know, ultimately it's council's decision to decide if this is the right fit. Um, I can relay that concern to the petitioner. They did indicate that just based on the layout, they did not feel like they could get any more. So they, this is the maximum they, that they think the site allows.
Thank you, Rachel. So obviously I drive up and down this stretch. Couldn't tell you how many times a day, cause, cause I live right over there and, and right now I'm inclined to oppose this specifically based on the, on the parking issue with it. Um, I think that this is going to encourage people to park in the shoulders on Harvard Street, which is what we've seen happen in other, uh, I've seen it happen in Vista Acres, actually, where, where you've got too many people and not enough parking and rental units and, uh, destroyed people's lawns. And we don't, we don't want to encourage that, you know, I, I, I appreciate what they're trying to do here. I, I see it. I see what they're trying to do. Um, but if you're going to be doing what sounds to me. if you're going to be doing what sounds to me and looks to me from the planning commission report targeted to college students for rentals, and you don't have a parking space per bedroom, plus friends coming over to hang out and whatever else may be going on. I just can't see imposing that on that that neighborhood. I did read through there and the only the only person that showed up to the meeting that wasn't one of the developers, the engineers was that was a resident was opposed to it. And I just, I can't see doing this to that to that neighborhood. And I'll be, I'll be opposing this. It's just too much. I think that we need to really take a look at revisiting our Wards Ferry Road corridor study before we do any additional development that's changing density on Wards Ferry. I think that's something that we should be doing is just looking at when we're going to revisit that corridor study before we move forward on any additional density on Wards Ferry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When is the roundabout scheduled to be completed?
So their timeline for the VDOT roundabout, like I said, they're in design now. They plan to advertise in March, receive bids in April, select in June, and then construction would begin in summer or fall of twenty six. And I think it was an eighteen month, I can verify to eighteen month construction period estimated.
Okay. So it's in design phase, I hear you saying. And I look at that map and it doesn't really have the roundabout on it. It just says future. Is there one with the roundabouts you could switch to?
Yeah, this this is an overlay. So I mean, obviously the proposed development is not in VDOT's plans, but the this, the petitioner's concept plan was shared with the VDOT team. They noted a couple of areas to coordinate on drainage, but did not raise major red flags about about the location of the entrance or anything like that.
But this isn't a final design?
No.
So my obvious concern is that we're approving a development right on the tip of the edge of this, and they're not even in the final design yet. It seems to behoove us to maybe put the brakes on a little bit till we get that final design. That would be my concern to make sure it's actually going to work because it's so close in that. And you got right of ways that obviously are going to come into play. There are already, that's a pretty convoluted map. I'm struggling to even figure out what all is going on in that map, to be honest. So I'm kind of curious to see the final of what they're doing. I have concerns about the parking as well. One additional concern I have is preserving the character of a neighborhood. Something I've always, you know, I sound like my dad now, but you know, we moved here in seventy three and a lot of the neighborhoods that that were being built like like this one in that time period really had a sense of community and a sense of of wholeness and that people know each other. And and one of the things I've heard from the people in this this development, not in the development, but in that neighborhood is that they want to preserve their their neighborhood as it is, and they don't want to see that change a lot. And I understand that change is necessary sometimes, but in this case, it just doesn't seem to match the character of the neighborhood in some ways. And I wish we could get a nice R one in there to replace the ones that were there. They were definitely aging and I think they were duplexes. Because when I went door to door, I met some of the people in the houses that are that are being torn down. But anyway, those are my concerns is I'd really like to see a final on the on the VDOT design before we get too far down the road with this. And parking, yes, but also I'd like to make sure we're preserving the character of the neighborhood.
And absolutely, points well taken. I will say VDOT has already done their right away acquisition. So at this point, I don't think they're anticipating a lot of change, but heard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you again, Rachel. Something else, too, that I'm inclined to bring up with this, and you mentioned, and I appreciate you bringing up the point because I didn't even think about that, that this could be a good opportunity for people without cars because of the proximity to things. Well, there's a reason that that roundabout is going there. And that roundabout is going there because it is impossible sometimes to make a left hand turn off of Harvard or CVCC onto Wards Ferry. And that's why that roundabout is going there. It is a very busy intersection. There's people come flying through there at a pretty high rate of speed. I've actually picked up people that I've seen walking down Wards Ferry Road before and giving them a ride because of my fear of seeing them get run over because because of how busy that road is and the then the the volume of traffic that comes through there. And that even makes me more inclined to oppose this because I wouldn't want to encourage somebody until this infrastructure is in place to to be living as a pedestrian crossing Wards Ferry Road on a regular basis. I just think that's a recipe for disaster that could really get somebody hurt.
Yes, question. One of the complaints about roundabouts increases pedestrian times because you're not just crossing a crosswalk necessarily. But usually they take you down the road a little bit before you cross and then you come back to the intersection. But I don't see any designs in there for crosswalks. Is that not included in this level of design? Is there any plan for pedestrians? This roundabout?
So they do have sidewalk, which is denoted. I believe I see pedestrian refuge in the in the islands, but I would happy to be, I would happy to look at this much closer on a screen that I can see and verify for you. Yeah. Yeah, I'd be happy to double check with VDOT.
Is there a bike lane through there?
I don't believe a bike lane is proposed as part of this. There may be a shared use path on the CVCC campus side because that looks a little bit wider. Yeah, but I don't believe there's a bike lane.
Thank you. Mr. Wilder. What might they do with the current zoning they have?
So R three permits smaller lot, single family and duplex development at a density of up to ten point eight nine units per acre. So there is a chance that they could maybe get close to ten, but it would really depend on the the frontage and they have two frontages in this case. So you got to factor in setbacks. So the the density allowed by R three is is very similar to what they're actually asking for in the R four district. But it would not be on individual lots. They did not have the acreage for townhomes in this instance. So they are proposing townhome style apartment units. But R three permits duplexes or smaller, single family.
See, the planning commission was afforded to, do you remember some of the main concerns, the ones that were opposed to the project for the planning commission?
I believe it was, I believe the parking came up about not having one space per bedroom, even though they technically are meeting the ordinance. And then just neighborhood character, I would say, was the other, was the other concern.
Okay, let's see. I guess some other townhomes in that same area, isn't it? In the same part. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Fershawson, looking at that map there, well, the plan on the right, left side there, they should be able to pick up a couple more parking spaces. Have they considered that?
I believe based on the setbacks and everything, they have maximized what what they can do. But I I'm sure the engineer would be happy to take a second look. Well, so with fire code, you don't want to have a an access where a fire truck could not turn around. So that may be the issue there. But I I can definitely double check with the engineer and see if there's any way they could fit in the others.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we
Just said.
Sure.
I thank you so much. I appreciate you bringing it down.
Going into core training. Mr. Attorney.
Introduce you all to a friend of mine and an excellent attorney, Sharon Pandak. Sharon is the former county attorney for Prince William County, a past president of the Local Government Attorneys Association. She's actually fairly close to where she grew up. She grew up in Stanton and graduated from the College of William and Mary. Relevant to the training that you're going to have today, Sharon has also served on the Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Ms. Pandak.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think I met all of you except Ms. Timmer, Mr. Feraldi. So so hello. Thank you very much for the invitation to come back and visit Lynchburg. My most recent visit was when my niece received her physical therapy training and graduate degree from the University of Lynchburg. So this is a place that we, the Pandaks, continue to have touching base. So I greatly appreciate that. I'm going to ask Matt if he'll be my timer. I understand you have a closed meeting roughly about quarter till six. You took it off. Okay. Well, if you can still give me the five minute high sign, I gather you will close on or about six o'clock. And it's important to me that I am not restraining you here. As Matt may have told you, this is not an approved training so that you meet your requirements under state law. Only the COYA Advisory Council staff can give you that training. So you're going to still have to either see them in person or go online and and get your training from them. If I can start, my dis ah, I do have some animation. My disclaimer is that basically what I've told you, these are going to be my personal opinions. I have background experience both as county attorney and then representing a number of localities and regional entities, constitutional officers, but these are going to be my personal opinions. I've got quite a bit of material to cover. And so if I ask you to let me defer a long question or answer to the end, then then I hope you'll understand. You are required to read the Conflicts of Interest Act upon assuming office. You don't want to ignore the implications of the Conflicts of Interest Act. And we'll talk about that. It's it's very serious topic to discuss. But I'm going to try to make it a little bit entertaining. And so we're going to, we're going to use some doors. I understand that you are a community that is trying to spiff up and and be your best community. So we're not using old doors. We're going to do, pick one of these special COYA event doors, COYA meaning conflicts of interest, obviously. Since all of you are veterans and presumably have read the act, maybe numerous times, maybe you read it in order to fall asleep at night. I'm going to presume you have a base level of understanding, which is why I think that we can do this a little more fun way and and address issues along along. The category is, I am too busy. I'm too busy to file my annual economic interest form. I'm waiting for my mom, the clerk to counsel, to tell me. You, me, ignore COYA because you're not elected, but you're a member of the EDA or certain other authorities. You're a citizen member. List hole is there. You're a person occupying a position of trust. I haven't seen whether the council has actually designated such people, but many localities do that. Or you fail to provide the clerk with a written disclosure of a conflict or disqualification, do not announce it. So pick door C. Other two busy events while we're contemplating which door we're on. You fail to provide your legal counsel, and we'll talk about what that means with regard to COYA, all of the relevant facts when acting about a possible conflict. You fail to advise your legal counsel of conflict questions until just before a vote. You ask in the midst of a meeting. I remember the fear that a note came passing around the dais to me saying, do I have a conflict? That's a little hard. People are looking at you as you open up this note that travels through all the the board members. Or somebody raises the question verbally and it's a significant one and you say, I need a recess and now everybody thinks horrible things are happening when it might be quite a simple question. Or the two busy events, you continue discussing a matter in which you've disqualified yourself. Very problematic. We'll talk about that more. You fail to identify personal interests of persons in your household as part of your personal interest. You fail to follow the requirements for reporting if you accept tickets to, and we'll talk about events later. But before you open that door, consider the linchpin for the Conflicts of Interest Act is the issue of personal interest. The other linchpin, and I should not let this go by without saying it, although it's pretty obvious. You can't accept bribes. It's illegal in Virginia to accept bribes. There are separate statutes even outside of the Conflicts of Interest Act that that make it criminal to accept bribes. You also can't misuse public assets, separate criminal statute. So then we get to personal interest in which you are going to, when we get through this, disqualify, depending on your interest, or disclose. Now, as things are normally under Virginia law, it's more likely you're going to have to end up disclosing and being able to vote if you can do so objectively and fairly and in the public interest. But before you can figure out all those things, am I disqualified or am I only able to just, I'm able to disclose and then vote? Let's look at it. Personal interest, five, more than $5,000 in income compensation fringe or other benefits annually, important word annually. Ownership of real and personal property, if the interest is more than $5,000, exclusive of ownership, other ownership in a business income or benefits from the property. Personal liability, so it's not just what you're making or what you own, it's what you owe on behalf of a business of more than three percent of the business's asset value or an option. Not that you actually own it, but an option if the interest is more than three percent or $5,000. Additional examples, debts to creditors of more than $5,000, interest in rental property of more than $5,000, payment for representation by you or your associates of more than $5,000, payment for services from businesses which operate in Virginia of more than $5,000. That doesn't mean that all of these disqualify you, but this is what constitutes personal interest. So you open the door. You weren't paying attention to any of these things. If you didn't file your annual disclosure on time, it's $250 fine for late filing. And that notice comes through the Commonwealth's attorney. Not really pretty good for your credibility. Or you may have a potential fine for violation of one of the disclosure provisions, which is separate from that $250 fine, depending on voting on a transaction or other business. As I said, you can lose credibility for your tardiness. You may require the rest of council to have a new vote if you've been disqualified or should have been disqualified. And I should also note, you can forfeit your position. And we'll talk a little bit more later in terms of penalties if it's really severe and malfeasance. Okay, let's talk about another category. The category is, I am gifted. And particularly hard to go through if you sort of say, well, you put your finger here on this place in this in the statue, you put it here in this place and you mix them all together and you figure out what is the answer? Go to two point two dash three one oh three point one regarding gifts. It is a very long provision to have. It is a very long provision to have to read, and I would tell you that you shouldn't just look at it on the internet, you should print it off, because it is a bit to go through. So, "I am gifted. Constituents want to acknowledge my help with presence. I'm invited to so many dinners, I must enjoy their offers of tickets. I'm asked to find jobs or provide inside information for supporters. People acknowledge the burden of service on my family by helping them out." So, you pick that door because you're gifted, and the answer is, well, is it a gift? Is it prohibited? What are the reporting requirements? And what are the thresholds? Before you open that door yet, let's look at what constitutes gifts. Those things for which you are neither paid nor rendered service in exchange, or adequate consideration. So, combination of gift or entertainment of more than $50 in value, and there's some variations on this. Gifts of more than $108 each, or inadequate, or in aggregate from any lobbyist who is seeking to contract with your county are prohibited. Here, you can't aggregate gifts that are more than $20 in value. And I have to go back, and I have a typo on my 50, it's 20. Please, please make that note a typo. So, why $108? Well, there's a provision in the statute that has it increased, that $100 were initially started periodically, and the COYA council has advised me that it's now $108 in terms of gifts. So, additional examples. Lots of things that can be gifts, and some people look at the dog down in the right-hand corner and go, "Really? A dog?" Old history is that on prosecutions that were brought against members of a local governing body in a locality, maybe not so far away, included somebody being given a dog as a gift. So, I throw the dog in there in addition to the other things you might not think about. Okay, let's look at some additional examples. Combined payment for a talk or meeting of more than $108. Now, there's exceptions, and this is where it is good to go and get advice. The widely attended event exception, which was not in the original Act but adopted later, says that an event at which at least 25 persons have been invited to attend, or there is a reasonable expectation that at least 25 persons will attend the event. That's because there may be an event, a ticket is given, then it's rained out, so it has in here the expectation. And the event is open to individuals who are members of the public, civic, charitable, or professional, who are from a particular industry or profession, or who represent persons interested in a particular issue. Under this widely attended event exception, you can accept a gift, and you can receive food, beverages, entertainment, or the cost of admission of more than $108 while you're in attendance, but you have to report it on your annual disclosure form. So, that's in response to the concerns that public officials are frequently asked to events in which a large number of people may come, and they're community events, and why shouldn't they go? And sometimes they're offered free tickets to those events with no intent necessarily by the givers, although intent's not part of this, to influence the performance by those public officials, but this is the exemption that allows for that. So, one to keep in mind, it's widely attended event exception, and as I noted, it came up, and the reason why they have in there, there's a reasonable expectation 25 people will be there, because you can't really predict in advance necessarily how many people are going to show up. And maybe it's an unpopular event, and nobody shows up, but they were planning or invited over 500 people. So, it would leave the public official who's coming in a bind if they're given tickets for that and do show up. Okay. Now, here's another one, and this is important, the approved in advance exception, and this is one where you can get approval of a gift of travel or travel-related expenses in excess of $108. But you have to file a written request with the COYA council staff, and you have to receive approval of it. So, just because you spin that off, you go, "Oh, my gosh, that event's this weekend. It's Friday afternoon, I'll slip it to them right now." The point that was made to me by Stuart Pato, who is the executive director, was, "It has to be timely." So, don't expect to get an answer with an approval if you file it on Friday afternoon. So, word to the wise. But it does allow, again, for an approval, and I think the standard that they're going to be using on that is much like the widely attended exception standard, not based on number of people, but also is a question of, is there going to be an attempt to influence that public official with respect to some particular thing? Importantly, even though you get approval, you still have to file that information on your annual disclosure form. Okay, now, what if you didn't do any of this? You may pay fines, you may receive a civil penalty that's based on the value of the gift. For example, it can be the difference between the value of the gift at the time you received it, and then at the time you learned that you shouldn't have received it because you weren't supposed to take this gift. You can pay that over to the person who gave it to you and kind of clear yourself, perhaps, under COYA, or easier, you can just give the gift back. A little dicey one with respect to tickets. Somebody may give you tickets, drop-off tickets, you find tickets. Are you, at that point, guilty of accepting a gift? Well, the answer to that is no. But if you use the tickets, then you have an issue. So, my recommendation has always been is, is give the tickets back as soon as possible, directly or indirectly. I will tell you, because it's long ago, public information or not confidential, that when we were dealing in Prince William County with the potential for Disney coming, I was fortunate to have council representing Disney who understood these things, and we, I said, "Please, don't start sending gifts. Don't let Disney send gifts." Well, he didn't necessarily, he couldn't necessarily control his client all the time, so Lion King tickets showed up, and free tickets to the Washington Zoo. And so, the immediate questions were, can, you know, can we take them? And my recommendation was, "No, don't take them, because clearly they are designed to influence you. It's not just a question of value." And one person said, "Can I take them, because I want to go protest across the street?" And I said, "Please, don't take the ticket. You want to go out and protest, you know, to stand across the street." We received a number of what I will call insignificant gifts, one of which were the plastic ornaments that are like Styrofoam. They probably are worth about 10 cents at most for Christmas, and I was truly proud of my governing body because all of those ornaments ended up on my desk. There's like, nobody said, "We're not going to take anything that looks like a gift, even if it has minimal value." So, but there can be fines, there can be civil penalties, and depending on what the egregious nature is of the gift, there could be a potential, if there's a knowing violation of the Conflicts of Interest Act, for malfeasance charges and a forfeiture of office. Okay. I want to tell you about one outlier in the Act, and I call it an outlier because the Conflicts of Interest Act talks about all sorts of things that are, what conduct requires disclosure, disclosure and disqualification. We've talked already that you can't take bribes. There's a whole list of things that are other prohibited actions in the Conflicts of Interest Act. So, it truly is a matter where you have to look at a number of places in order to, may I be absolutely sure that you're doing what you're required to do. But this one is a little odd one, and I wanted to just mention it to you in terms of generally prohibited conduct, and it applies to conduct with respect to not only local government officers and employees, but also state. And it says that it is prohibited for an officer or an employee to use his, I put in her, his public position to reiterate or threaten to retal, excuse me, to retaliate or threaten to retaliate against any person for expressing views on matters of public concern, or for exercising any right that is not otherwise protected by law. Provided, however, this subdivision shall not restrict the authority of any public employer to govern conduct of its employees and to take disciplinary action in accordance with applicable law. And it also doesn't limit the authority of constitutional officers in that regard. But I point this out because it's one that's a little unusual when you're talking about monetary interests and influence, and what's prohibited and what's permitted, to also find this in there in the Act. So, I call it out to you because it's not one that you, a provision that I think you would normally look at. So, your claim is that the Conflicts of Interest Act does not understand the demands on politicians. And so, the answer is, which door? And the answer is, you just shouldn't open that door, because it doesn't matter whether the Act understands or doesn't understand. It's statute, it's law. It is not an ethics guide, but it sets minimum qualifications. Now, I want to touch on briefly, because Matt asked me to do so, is what about campaign contributions? They're not a gift under COYA if they're a campaign contribution. It's a separate statute that controls, and you have to look to the Campaign Finance Disclosure Act. And hopefully, all of you, when you ran for office, had somebody who really was looking out for you in that regard, even as you looked at it, because it's equally complex act in terms of meeting the requirements. But you can seek guidance with respect to that from the State Board of Elections, through the Department of Elections. However, sometimes there are people that say they want to give you helpful assistance. They know you're going through a campaign, but it's not a campaign contribution. Or they want to give you other gifts. They may be reportable or regulated under the Conflicts of Interest Act, if they are not matters that are regulated under the Finance Act. So, you have to be a little careful there. Again, being really scrupulous with respect to your campaign finance reporting and what you can do under that should help you a whole lot to avoid having the triggers under the Conflicts of Interest Act. But just remember that, and you may have to seek two sources of advice with respect to gifts. Okay, so the next category is, "I know what I am doing." I've mentioned already that you probably ought to look to somebody for guidance, but the category is, "I know what I am doing." So, you pick door B, because you don't need any help sorting this out. And the answer is, no. Don't do it. How do you handle the appearance of a conflict? If you're at door B, you're saying, "Ah, I'm just going to ignore the concerns being raised. I'll just ride it out. It's not making the newspapers. Don't need to worry about it." You avoid interaction with your local government attorney. You don't call Matt or the Commonwealth's Attorney, because they don't really need to be bothered with this. You tell accusers to bring it on. You ask the state police for an investigation. You claim the matter is too personal to discuss. I had that. I've dealt with those situations before. One of the reasons why you might go to your city attorney first before going to the Commonwealth's Attorney, because the city attorney's advice is attorney-client, not subject to FOIA, and the Commonwealth's Attorney's advice is subject to FOIA. Something to think about. You ask other council members under bonds of secrecy. I have this issue, but can I ask you and don't tell anybody? Or you call your mother. Probably your mother will tell you, if she's available. Mine spiritually would tell me, "Go talk to your city attorney, or your Commonwealth's Attorney, or the Attorney General, or the COYA Council." I want to turn to this one about, "Ask the state police for investigation," and give you an example. I had, and this is public, so it's my, years ago, I had a member of a governing body actually go to the state police, because he was tired of this issue of riding it out, tired of riding it out, tired of telling them to bring it on, did that too. So, he said, "I want you to know, I called the state police for an investigation." I said, "Okay." And he said, "I gave them all of the materials that you gave to me, and all the materials that I have," obviously not the confidential ones, but did that. He said, "I knew you'd want me to do that." And I said, "Yeah, well, you asked them for an investigation of one matter. Did you think about whether, when they come in, they might have a whole host of other things they personally decide?" They, as an agency, not individual officers, decide are important for investigation. So, it's possible to do it. He turned out fine. Everything ended up being indicated it was appropriate and consistent with law, so, but interesting dynamic, and I just mentioned it to you because somebody, every once in a while, I say, "Well, I'll ask for a higher power. I'm going to the police." So, okay. So, you ignored, you did all those things, and didn't go to the Commonwealth's Attorney, or your city attorney, or the COYA Council, and this is what you end up with. Say it ain't so. Okay. Now, I've mentioned those asking for opinions. Under the statute, you can go to your local government attorney, and if Matt gives you an opinion based on all the relevant facts, then if you are to get prosecuted for violation of the Conflicts Act, then his opinion can be introduced in evidence to demonstrate it was not a knowing violation. And that's the important thing under the Act, that you have knowingly violated, among others. So, good thing. You can go the Commonwealth's Attorney or the core council staff, again, giving them all of the facts. You can't just sort of say, "I want to tell you these few things, but I'm not going to tell you some other stuff," or you never say that, you just don't. If you do that, and they render an opinion, and you follow that opinion, it's not that they just give you an opinion, you follow it, then you are protected from any prosecution because, under the statute. Very important. One of the things I've done, I don't know that it's the only way it can be done, and I've been really fortunate to work with Commonwealth's attorneys who were willing to work with me on this, and some may not be, is I used to, when I was asked for an opinion from a member of my governing body, I'd discuss it, we'd go over, and I'd say, "Are these all the facts?" And I'd say, "Here's my opinion, but I really think that I ought to go to the Commonwealth's Attorney and ask for an opinion, or I might go to the COYA Council staff. Do you mind if I do that? Because I want to make sure that you can rely on this, and you're not worried whether my opinion's going to be a piece of evidence in a prosecution. You want to avoid even having a prosecution." So, I, that was, I've been fortunate to be able to do that. But, one of the important things is that you ask promptly. It's not very helpful if you ask after the fact. The other thing is that you, if you have a determination of no conflict on a matter that is maybe politically problematic, a hot issue, lots of times that's when conflict claims come in, is when there's a particular controversial issue, then you might want to think about announcing the determination, no conflict, in a way that I call a thoughtful way, which could include sharing that you asked for an opinion, or having the attorney state that the opinion was given, sharing it publicly. Once you go there with your city attorney, you're going to have that whole opinion out there. there, so you want to make sure you have that discussion. And if there's a requirement for disclosure, provide that disclosure. If you have a personal interest under the act, and the kicker is not that if you're not disqualified, you can go ahead, do the disclosure, and then vote, you have to also disclose that notwithstanding your interest, you can participate fairly objectively and in the public interest. Now, that's a personal opinion. Nobody tests that, but you want to make sure that your actions after making that disclosure are ones that indicate that you're acting fairly objectively in the public interest. So you don't want to pick a door without calling a lifeline. And as I call lifeline here, it's Matt, it's your Commonwealth's Attorney, it's the COIA Ethics Advisory Council staff. Another thing that Stuart Pato at the COIA Ethics Council has told me is, again, don't call the day of the council meeting or send an email to them. That's often how they'll do it, because they want to make sure you set forth all the facts. And you might want to consult with Matt before you even send the email to make sure that you are including relevant facts. Don't do it the day of your meeting, because the problem is, they can't get back to you. Now, there may be something that is an unusual event, but I would say, give it at least three days. And the more time, the better, and you will test your ability or Matt's ability to work effectively with a council staff if you start saying, last minute, I need to know, I need to know. Because these are not easy answers in most cases. You have to go through a number of places in the statute, the particular facts apply them, and see what the answer is. So I have included there the information about contacting them. You pick door C, which is the one that you're going to use the lifeline. And to my point of view, you get peace of mind, you get credibility, and you can focus on your role as a public servant as opposed to batting down arguments all the time about whether or not there's a conflict. Okay, we're going to talk through a few scenarios. Do we have time, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. And I listen to Dragnet when I'm driving sometimes at night. So we're going to, I'm probably, you all probably don't even know who he is, but anyway. The situations, though, are fictional, so there's no attempt here to have any reality to any person or situation. And if I happen to hit something, it's purely coincidental. It's not based on any intent otherwise. So you have with you, I believe, a set of scenarios. And at the risk of being boring, I'm going to talk you through them. The first one is called Shake and Bake. Here's the cast. Councilmember, and I refer to them in the scenario as CM, with no disrespect, it just got too long to write it. Breon Bake is tired of trying to turn hops into not very good beer. She learns that a solar farm developer is looking for a site in Great City. She calls Sun Power's executive Eddie Solari and offers her land and buildings. The property is held in the name of the Hops Family Trust. CM Bake is a 60% trust beneficiary. Solari gives CM Bake an option from Sun Power to buy her property contingent on council approval of a special use permit for the project. Bake calls Planning Director Don Durright to obtain a meeting with Sun Power to discuss how to proceed. Bake does not tell Durright that she's a beneficiary of the trust that owns the property. Councilmember Susie Shake unabashedly likes the monetary sound of NASCAR. She calls Mo Toil and encourages her and some of her other neighbors who own industrial property to talk to racing promoters about locating in Great City. Toil says that seven of CM Shake's neighbors have decided to pool their land. Shake tells her that Shake has snagged the interest of Fast Track, Inc. However, Fast Track is looking for a sewer extension to make the property viable. Shake and Toil decide to visit Planning Director Durright. Shake calls Durright to set up a meeting. At the council meeting two weeks later, CM Shake makes a motion to expedite the SUP application for Fast Track. The motion is seconded by another CM. The mayor calls for a vote. Shake votes on the motion, which passes. To aid the council's understanding of the impacts of racing and how they can be mitigated, Shake then hands out season tickets to the NASCAR races at another Fast Track raceway. She says the tickets are from Fast Track. Shake states that there might be a FOIA challenge if the council attended the races together, and besides, she wants to take her family. Councilmember Bake feels the rivalry for economic development and makes a motion for the Sun Power application to be expedited as well. The motion is seconded. The mayor calls for the vote, and Bake votes on the motion. It does not pass. So we're going to go to some questions. And I'm smart enough to know that I'm not going to call on people unprepared, but you're welcome to chime in. So we have a number of questions. The first one is, if CM Bake has disclosed that she has a, that she is a trust beneficiary on her annual disclosure, does she need to tell Planning Director Durright and the council? And the answer is that if she has put it on her annual disclosure, that's all good. But she does need to tell the planning director and the council because she has a personal interest in a transaction that is about to come before the city council. So the answer is yes, and we'll talk about that a bit more as to what she needs to do. And it's not just simply calling up the planning director or mentioning to the council individually. She has to state that to the council on a separate disclosure form that gets filed with the clerk, and should do it also orally when the matter comes up each time. Seems a little awkward, but actually, we've done it with a number of members of governing bodies, and then once everybody understands, it's not awkward. Second question, can CM Bake meet with the Planning Director Durright if Sun Power does not attend? The answer is no. Now, why is it no? We talked about disclosure. Because what it appears is, at least from the information we have in this scenario, is that Bake owns the property that is going to be the property that comes up for a special use permit for the project. If that's the only property that's part of that project, then it is likely that that council member is going to be disqualified. And if she is disqualified, then she is completely disqualified. She is not just disqualified from voting, she is disqualified from talking about it on the council dais, she is disqualified from meeting with city staff in order to discuss it. So the answer is no. Does that make sense? Does everybody understand that? That's one of the hardest things, I think, not to understand from the standpoint of what the statute says, but one of the natural things for somebody, if it were my land, and I had, I was excited about a project, even though I couldn't vote on it, even though I filed the disclosure and everything else, I want to know what's going on. If there's a legal question for Matt, he calls for a closed meeting, I want to be in there. No. If I'm disqualified, I can't be in that closed meeting. I want to be able to mention it to people. Or somebody who's on staff may not even realize that I'm the owner of the property because it's in a trust. And they may happen to mention it to me, say, see it coming up on the agenda? Oh, yeah, let me tell you about that. No. Can't do that. The only place, and we'll talk about this when I get down in a second, there is a way you, the person who owns the property, who is a council member, who is disqualified can speak, and we'll talk about it in a moment. So, the third question, can, maybe this works? Well? What?
It won't happen.
Oh, it won't? Okay, well, we won't do it then. I will count dots. Number three, can CM Bake make a motion to expedite the Sun Power application? No. Even though that's just a procedural motion, the answer is no. No involvement. Can CM Bake comment on the project if she discloses her trust interests and speaks at citizen time? Okay. Layers here. The answer is yes, but first, she has to file the disclosure in which she states her interest. She has to disqualify, so she's not, can't be involved, and then she can speak on it at citizen's time. So what I have found governing body members most comfortable in doing, both the individual and the remainder of the governing body, is for that person to leave the dais and walk around and speak at the podium or wherever you normally handle citizen's time, but making it abundantly clear visually, as well as on the record, that the person is not acting as a public official in this matter. Okay. More questions. Can CM Shake meet with the planning director and his seven neighbors to discuss the proposed NASCAR project? So we're now on Shake. We were on Bake, now we're on Shake. Shake can do this after filing a disclosure, because Shake is part of a group that is of more than three people who are equally affected or similarly affected. So if you remember, in the, in the scenario, there was a pooling of land. So Shake is not the only owner of the land. Now, even though a disclosure is made, Shake has to again say that Shake can act fairly and objectively and in the public interest. My view would be that if you're an owner, one of the owners of the land that's pooled, it's a little hard to act in the public interest, and therefore Shake should probably disqualify. Okay? Now, planning director, let's use some variations on this. The planning director is holding a community meeting. So the seven neighbors are there. It's an open public meeting. Can Shake sit in the back and be part of the meeting? There may be 50 people there. I would say the answer is yes, that that could occur. But it's very important to make clear, and Shake needs to be made clear, that not acting as a public official. In fact, the planning director in my mind should be careful about even the deference giving, usually introduce who's at meetings, oh, yeah, there's councilperson so-and-so. And my view would be that the planning director should just hold it as a public meeting and not make particular, nope. Again, nuances here that I think it's important that you talk with your city attorney about. Can CM Shake make the motion to expedite the SUP application for Fast Track? Well, if CM Shake is disqualified, the answer is no. But if CM Shake has said that he can act in the public interest fairly and objectively, nope, can make the motion. My view is that Shake might really want to pay attention to what the public perception is on this in addition to what the minimum standard is under COIA, and maybe decide to disqualify, because as we get to the next question, it seems pretty clear that Shake is not acting just in the public interest, because the question is, can Shake accept and hand out season tickets from Fast Track? If a councilperson is handing out tickets from the proposed business that may be buying their property, then my view is that that's probably not fairly and objectively in the public interest, and no one would perceive it that way. My answer would be no, that Shake can't accept and hand out season tickets from Fast Track. So what disclosure, if any, do Shake and Bake have to make? I think we talked through those. In both cases, my view would be that they probably both should disclose, they should disclose, I call a loud disclosure publicly at the council meetings, as well as the written disclosure they have to make, and disqualify. So let's try another one. This one's called Building Towards the Big Bang. Lead Construction is anxious to construct mixed residential and commercial developments in a new way. It has designed a low-maintenance community of the future with driverless cars and drone delivery service from retail stores called Home Range. CM Councilmember Jetpack has learned that the project is looking for a location from her husband, Shell Cooper, who is one of the architects and developers. CM Pack calls the city manager and argues that the city should be offering infrastructure incentives to such a progressive business. She wants him to take the issue to council for action. The city manager is reluctant to do so. He does tell Pack that last week, he received a small drone from Lead Construction to try out at home. The city manager asks Pack for the name of the president of Lead Construction so he can return the drone. He operated the drone before he realized it was worth $500, and his young son keeps flying it into neighbors' windows. CM Pack also calls the school superintendent and offers to obtain some of the experimental cars for school use at a 30% discount. The superintendent is tempted and asks who she should contact to explore the issue. Pack refers her to Cooper as the initial contact person. The superintendent says she will do so. This would allow the school system to discard its aging fleet of golf carts and use the experimental cars on school campuses. CM Pack asks if she can buy one of the old golf carts for her nephew. The superintendent says that she can, she'll put her on the list, and they will be sold at $500 each. Cooper calls city manager in order to sign up for citizen's time to speak. Cooper says he understands that CM Pack will make a motion for the board to ask the Economic Development Authority to assist Lead Company with financial incentives. So let's look at a few questions. Can Councilmember Pack properly offer the car discount to the schools? Interesting scenario and question. Probably not, but we may need to know more about this. There wouldn't be a problem with Pack probably putting the schools in contact with Lead Construction. School superintendent can talk to Lead separately, but for CM Pack to offer the discount to the schools suggests that that council member has a personal interest in Lead Construction. And we don't have enough facts to know more than that, other than we learn that her husband is one of the architects and developers. Don't know whether he's a Lead Construction employee or not. So I kind of left out some facts in this because it's important to realize that there are more facts that we may have to know before we know the answer to that. Can the city manager return the drone and void violation of the Conflicts of Interest Act? And I've cited to the particular sections, it's a bit worth looking at if you ever have this situation. The city manager could have returned the drone right away. No problem with that. But now, the city manager has operated the drone, and his son has flown it into neighbors' windows, suggesting that that drone has gotten some damage to it. So the likelihood is that the city manager is going to have to pay the cost of that drone to Lead Construction in order to avoid... drone to Lead Construction in order to avoid having a violation of the gift provision, and may want to indicate on that anyway and get an advice from the city attorney as to what else needs to be done. I have 10 minutes left. Thank you. Okay, so, can CM Pack work a discount deal with the schools? I think we sort of already covered that. The answer is no. I think that's clearly an influence issue, and a council member can't be working a discount deal with a company that is looking for approval from the city council. Can CM Pack buy a golf cart from the schools? Actually, the answer is yes. There's the $500 exception under the Conflicts Act, but also, it appears the schools are selling that at a uniform price, so no problem for Pack to buy the golf course, the golf cart. What disclosure, if any, does CM Pack have to make? Well, the problem with the arguable personal interest here is that of her husband, who lives with her. And we don't know what the relationship is between her husband and Lead Construction, but it appears to be a pretty significant one. So, there have to be more details learned in order to figure out the nature of the personal interest. But Pack's personal interest here derives from her husband's interest. Can CM Pack be involved in council or Economic Development Authority discussions, proposed development? Well, if she's disqualified, the answer is no. Potentially, maybe with the Economic Development Authority if the council does not appoint the members of the Economic Development Authority, as is, say, for example, a private entity, but not as a public official can CM do. Can she simply speak with the city manager? No, that's not, that's probably not going to be the case if she's got to disqualify. If she calls the city manager and says, look, what do I do? Then the city manager probably should call us, tell her to call the city attorney or the Commonwealth's attorney and sort out whether or not she has a personal interest in this project that she's got to disclose. Matt tells me we have 10 minutes left? Seven, okay. So, I have a couple more scenarios, members of council, I had given to you. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to go through all of those. I want to skip. You have them, and you're welcome to take a look at them. I want to talk about, in summary, the importance of not only doing the training that you have to do every two years to be consistent with the statute, but the importance of the goal of the Conflicts of Interest Act, which is to enhance citizen confidence in government. Realizing, because it's state law, it just sets minimum standards. So, it is not, although it says ethics council, it's not a set of standards that are set as ethics. They are governmental standards set by the General Assembly. But also, I think you would find, and not just Matt finding it, because he works with, would work with the Coya Council advisory staff frequently, but I think you would find that those staff are very attentive and concerned about assisting you in order to be in compliance with the statute. And that's why I feel very comfortable in encouraging you to, early on, when you think there's a smidgen of a potential of having a personal interest, or a potential for there being a gift, somebody who says you're a friend, or maybe a very distant relative, because you have to look at the act, and it says who constitutes a relative and can give a gift when it's not really a gift under the act. But somebody who says they're your friend, you want to look at that before you take that gift, and you want to make sure that it's not an attempt to influence you in the performance of your duties as a public official. And so, it gives you a level of confidence. It enhances citizen confidence, and, you know, who knows how we're reading the news now, whether it's on paper, whether it's on the internet, but it, you don't want to be that kind of bad news. You want to have the issues that you care about being the issues that are in the news. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. If you have questions, as I said, I'm not an authority that's approved under the act now, except for my client, the Potomac Rappahanna Transportation District, which is, I can do it for. But if you find that you have a question about something that I've said today, please contact Matt, and Matt will contact me, and we'll try to get back to you, and he can give you advice. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for your hospitality.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Number five on our agenda is roll call. Mr. Ferrari?
I have three very brief items, and then one I'd like to speak a little bit more to. First and foremost, today is First Responders Day, if folks didn't know, October 28. And I wanted to highlight that for those in law enforcement, public safety in general, certainly to include our fire department and as well our dispatch center. They are true heroes. I think if you go back maybe a week and a half, I think it was LPD Shared, I think their name is Samantha, had her fourth CPR save over the phone. So, it's just incredible to see that kind of stuff. So, today's for them. I had a request that I emailed about, and then I wanted to make sure that the folks in Windhurst who were asking me about it saw it on camera. I'd asked a little bit about VDOT work being done on Lacston, but because of where the city line is, it's a VDOT project, but it's going to impact city residents, and they put signs out, hey, there's going to be work done, find an alternate route. Well, if you live on Enterprise, you may not have much of an alternate route. So, if we can get some information out to our folks, that might be very helpful. And then also, the airport is great news. It's fantastic. I would like to request us exploring what we might be able to do to offset some parking costs, if we actually might be able to lower that parking fee, even by just a dollar or two, what that would mean. I would look to our finance committee if you're willing to take that up and review it and find out the implications. Just any way to incentivize use of the airport is what my intention is there. Okay, colleagues, you know this is something I wanted to bring up. You should have it all in your emails over the last 24, 36 hours, however long it's been. I've done my best to engage everyone as quickly as I had prepared this resolution related to what's happening in Richmond right now. For the record, I wanted it to be done as much in writing as possible, so I could accurately record what my intentions were, what I wanted to communicate to you all. It's my hope that this resolution is really very direct. It's short and to the point. Right now, Richmond, the General Assembly is in a special session that the Democrats called to change the redistricting process in Virginia. They're seeking to circumvent what was just passed a few years ago via constitutional amendment, and they released their language just about a few hours ago to let the General Assembly draw just the congressional maps, only for this decade. If another state does it first, then they're allowed to do it, which I find kind of wonky. In short, I'm opposed to that entirely. I think we all are opposed to what the intent is going on down there. So, a couple points. One, it expresses our opposition to what they're doing. Two, it states our support for the current process that went through about two or three years ago. It also expresses our support for legislative districts that are compact, contiguous, and comply with applicable law. And then, Councilman Missions and I were having a good back and forth, and he had a very, very good idea, that there wasn't enough meat on the bone here, and I thank him for submitting the idea. I did share language with him. I hope he's had a chance to review it. I did share it with our city attorney, and it does express, if the state follows through assists, that we would actually explore legal options to sue the state about what they're doing, and if there's an opportunity to engage with them legally, that we would take that on. And I did some thinking on it. There's historical context for the city. The city itself has been gerrymandered before. So, there's historical justification for Lynchburg to take this and express opposition, because I don't want to see that happen again. I don't want to see gerrymandering our congressional seats just because one party doesn't like what's going on at the White House. 65% of Virginians, over 2.7 million Virginians, voted to adopt the current process, including over 12,000 Lynchburg residents. And I think I've hit all my points. Here's my request. I know this council has many different opinions, and faction has embedded itself, and I've contributed to it at times. I think this is something that we can all get behind and say, what's happening down there is wrong. We can express the intent of the city that we oppose it, and that we're open to exploring legal options to combat it. My request is that we would place it, by consensus, we would place it on the agenda at 7:00, at the end of the general business section. If you want to table it then, if that's the desire, then by all means, I won't stand in the way of that. If you want to pass it then, that would be my preference, great. If you want to tweak it, I've committed to working with everyone about ensuring the language is what you want it to be, and passing something that expresses our opposition to it. So, thank you for obliging me. I would request consensus from council that what has been shared with you, and we do have printouts if you did want to see it one more time, high consensus, this be put on the general business section at 7:00 meeting.
Do we have a vote? Let me consensus. Mari?
We can't do this during roll call. It's prohibited by our rules to here. We're not allowed to debate in roll call. We can't vote in a work session without a supermajority. So, I think the proper way to do this would be to attempt to amend the agenda at the beginning of the 7:00 meeting. So, I guess technically that's the point.
Not necessarily incorrect, I would say, Mayor. The rules do stipulate that council can do what it needs to do, and I'm not a fan of this rule, but it is what we currently have in place, that we can do what we need to do when we need to do it. There's two reasons I went about it this way. One, I didn't want to make a motion and have us be of conflict. I wanted it to be something that we could all say, let's come together, put it on the agenda, if we need to work through it, we'll work through it, pass it or pass it. So, that's the heart behind this. I intended to do it this way, because I didn't want it to be adversarial. I wanted it to be something we could all come together to at least just get on the agenda.
Mr. Dean?
Here's I want to commend you for attempting to do something that I support an issue. It is incredibly important, and the gerrymandering is probably the worst I've ever seen. I'm glad that you're bringing attention to the issue. I'm concerned about this in lots of ways, especially with our charter and potentially opening that up at this time when there's such an aggressive things going on with gerrymandering. I don't want to see it affect Lynchburg. A little concerned about raising our head above the radar, getting involved in obviously a partisan issue that's not necessarily a city issue, and I'm a loud advocate for sticking with our rules as best we can. And I don't think we've already figured out, we don't have exactly consensus on that, and I would agree, I don't think there's consensus to do it by consensus, which I don't. But I do want to commend you on bringing attention to this incredible issue. Districts should be contiguous, and I certainly hope the Attorney General's opinion that came in today stops this dead in its tracks. That would be great, but I don't necessarily think this is something Lynchburg needs to entangle itself with, and that's all I'll say.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll close by saying this. Just two weeks ago, we adopted something and passed it at roll call related to abortion clinics. We did it during a work session. We did it during a work session. Folks, if you want to table this at the 7:00 meeting, I won't stand in the way, but can we get it on the agenda? That's all I'm asking. Just put it on the agenda. If you want to table it and deal with it two weeks, once all of Richmond has taken care of it, they're going to be done with this by Friday. I mean, that's the reality. If you want to table it, that's my request. Go for it. Table it then, just put it on the agenda. That's my sincere request, and I won't hold up roll call anymore. If we don't have consensus, then we'll explore other options.
Anyone else? Well, we're not debating.
I just discussed whether there's consensus or not, but I think it's appropriate at this point to continue roll call. It's what I think is the right thing to do. People want to weigh in somehow.
Mr. Wilder, you have anything?
I just looked at the email. I didn't even, I've been traveling today, so I didn't look at any of my emails. I apologize. I'm not prepared to discuss, but even, we're not even debating, I'm not even prepared to make a comment. I mean, I'm not sure, it was the same thing as in Texas. I'm not sure what the rationale is, so I'd rather not even comment about anything, something I have no, I'm just getting just now, apologize. I've been traveling today.
So, can we get this on the amended agenda for this evening?
So, the three members that have spoken in this issue are correct. There isn't debate permitted during roll call. What you all could do is complete your roll call and then take up the issue if there's a consensus to continue the discussion on it. And if there is, you could probably discuss whether it should go on this evening.
Continuing roll call. You have anything for roll call? Mr. Wilder?
Just real quick, I did meet with the new director for the Lynchburg Downtown Association. I would appreciate her, as well as the president of the board, Chris Boswell, and one of the residents, just to get more information about her role and what she expects from us, just to get a better understanding. So, I appreciate them meeting with me. I'm excited about the idea she has for downtown. I'm talking with some of the residents that live downtown as well, and making sure she's working with them, and just, I'm excited about the future for downtown and that association. They have some really great things in work. I know she's coming to city council, I think next month, I believe. So, looking forward to that presentation, that we continue to thrive and move our downtown, and the great work, great event we had last week with the event organization. I'm excited about all the great things that happened in Lynchburg. Thank you.
Anyone else for roll call? Ms. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of these are issues that I've raised with you all, so I'm saying thank you and just kind of running through the list again, but really appreciative to Captain Hinckley at the Police Department, gave me a call, talking through traffic enforcement and policies around that. Looking forward to allocating some funds to them later today for that very purpose. In addition to that, though, one of the items that we discussed as a potential exploration is education with the college orientations. I know for me, when I moved here in high school, 501 North being the same as 29 South was very confusing, because I came from a grid, and at that grid, it was legal to drive 80 miles an hour, and it's definitely not here for very good reasons. So, as we've got students coming in from all over, it would be great if we could incorporate some kind of orientation for the students coming into Lynchburg. Yay for extending the acceleration lane at ramp eight. In addition to that, I have been talking with Greg and Metchy from the legislative perspective, from the city perspective, on deer population. Thank you to council for previously taking action on that, and thank you city staff for exploring additional options with me. As a Boonsborough resident, that is a huge concern for safety, both traffic, as well as alpha gal, and then, of course, the fiscal concerns with property. So, that's an ongoing issue for Ward 1. Thank you also for assistance with Magnolia Street coming into. Thank you also for assistance with Magnolia, Magnolia Street coming into Bedford Avenue and the efforts there, and I'll continue to follow up there. And there is going to be an information outreach to citizens for that presented by city staff when that date is established. I will be attending that and send out information, but Magnolia Street, you are not forgotten and I've got more emails coming your way as I've been working with city staff on that. And then thank you also to Winter and Jeff and Greg helping me put together that citizen information around property valuations and, and that process for appeal. And then lastly, this is a new one, with the amphitheater, kind of piggybacking Dr. Wilder, but looking forward to the DLA presentation coming up in November, but could we explore shuttle opportunities for parking into events? Because I just, I know some of the small business owners down there and, and my concern is we're going to end up pushing out the people that built up that community downtown with the amphitheater opening in some of the parking situations. So if we could look at possibly shuttle service from Glass or here, I mean, just, just various areas around the city where there's better parking, I would really welcome the exploration of, of that. So that's all I have today. Thank you.
Mr. Deemer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great stuff. And I think it was the last council meeting on my way home, there was a 10-point buck staring at me in my front yard. So if you've got one of those approved permits to hunt on your property out in that area, you've got work to do. But no, just want to give a shout out to Lynchburg United cheering football with the end of the regular season. They had a great, successful season and I believe all the teams, all four age groups are moving on to the postseason this year, which is fantastic. Personally, you know, I'm kind of attached to two of the age groups because both my sons play and I have to give a special shout out to the, the mites, which is the seven and eight-year-olds for finishing the season undefeated, which is fantastic. So they will move on into the playoffs as division champs with the number one seed and hopefully will, will bring home championships in a couple of age groups would be, would be great. It's great to see rec football back in Lynchburg and, and see these kids just thriving with it. I can't think of really anything else, but I did want to thank Mr. Faroli for, for putting this together and highlighting this information because, because on a personal level, I do agree with the statements he's making on this resolution. And I just am not sure if this is the vehicle to, to do this. So, I defer. Thank you.
Mr. Deemer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to request from LPD some directed radar on Leesville Road. We continue to have motorcycle races and other type of car races going on on the straightaway near Big Horn Market and North Street. And one of them resulted in a wreck and I think of fatality, but this is an ongoing thing. This isn't that unusual, but I, I do think the directed radar patrols are helping slow things down, which is good. And maybe in the future, we might need to look at adjusting the speed limit as well because it's, it's just such a short stretch that jumps up, but in that stretch, people are going well over 20 even in that stretch of the existing speed limit. So it's, it's a real dangerous thing for families and kids that are in that area and there's still a lot of children whose house is right on Leesville Road, like 10 feet, you know, 15 feet from the road. And so that's a concern. Two events up at Liberty I wanted to highlight, one in the past, one in the future. The CEO Summit was an incredible success, bringing in some international folks and former head of Intel Corporation, the chipmakers, as well as some leadership from Great Britain, Prime Minister, I think it was, former Prime Minister. And the kids up there got to sit down and have dinner with these people at their table. And a lot of them were hard on the spot. It was really cool to go off in these great corporations. So what a great thing for, for Lynchburg. In the future, we've got homecoming coming up. So all my fellow alumni who live in the Lynchburg area, I want to make a personal invitation to all of y'all. Hope you're coming out to the football game and get, get to some of the festivities as well. I look forward to seeing my fellow alumnus there. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to city staff, EDA, for the great work they've done. Many, many good jobs has come to Lynchburg in the last year. We got an airport that I can jump on a flight, be in DC and be in Chicago on my way to San Diego, just like that. So it's a good thing. So thank, thank city staff and everybody that worked hard to get this done. Y'all doing a good job. Yes, sir. I made something.
Mr. Deemer was making his remarks to Vice Mayor. Something to think about coming up this week is we got Halloween on Friday night, right? So keep, be mindful of kids that are going to be walking around the neighborhoods, right? Pay attention. And if you're taking your kids out, make sure you've got something lit up on them or reflective on them because it is, it is dark earlier now. And with that also on Friday, I think it's important to note that there's a big football game and it's Heritage and LCA. And I think that that's fantastic because they're both really successful this season. They've got some great programs and it's great to see that that's, that's coming. So, you know, hopefully we can get a lot of people out supporting both sides. You know, they're both Lynchburg home teams and let's, let's, let's have a great game on Friday night. Also, the last thing I wanted to add to that was, I just left me, but that's it. Those two guys.
Mr. Farori?
We suspended and that the resolution that was cited earlier be added to the bottom of the general business section for seven o'clock.
So can I get a second for that? A second? Not a second? Not a second? It's done.
No more commentary from me, sir. No more commentary from me, sir.
So do, yes, I, I feel as though everything going on, the General Assembly, when the Walker went down to represent us in this area, and I believe he's going to bring us something back good. So this here, Chris, you know, and, and I know it's important to make us aware of everything that's going on and we are aware of everything that's going on. We don't live in a shell. We know what's happening. We know what's trying to be done. And the state charter said we can't redraw the lines during an election and, and, and we shouldn't be doing this. And lots of people has already voted. Do we discount their vote? We don't do that. So. Now, do we have, I know we're not supposed to vote during this time? Yes. Call for vote. Suspend the rules so this can be added to the agenda this evening.
I'll call for the vote then. Councilmember Farori?
Yes.
Councilor Missions?
No.
Councilmember Reed is absent. Councilwoman Timmer?
No.
Councilwoman Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Deemer.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion does fail.
Meeting adjourned. We will meet again at seven o'clock downstairs in City Chambers.